Well, call this meeting to order. We are here at the Community of the Whole on September 13th at the corner of Mill Road and Laurel Wood. Welcome also to the traditional territory of the Squamish Nation. Now, our first item of business is to approve our agenda. And the agenda is the tour, cycle tour itinerary, which has all been before us. And could I have a motion to adopt that agenda?
Okay.
Councillor Peddingill, a second there, councillor Hereford. None opposed, carried. Now, our tour agenda today has been coordinated by our transportation planner, Dora Gunn, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Gunn to introduce our itinerary. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm Dora Gunn, a transportation planner. And joining me to speak today are Chris Wickham, our Director of Engineering, Laura Prinsic, our manager at Municipal Infrastructure, no, Municipal Engineering, apologies, should know that by now, and Jeff Wint, our Sustainability Outreach Coordinator. And I'm going to hand it over to Jeff now to give a little talk about our bike maps.
Thank you, Dora. So last year, end of last year, we printed out these bike maps, which I've got for distribution afterwards. They're tools to help our community members and visitors figure out how to ride around town, where the infrastructure is. So it talks about the multi-use pathways, the on-street pathways, and then our neighborhood pathways. And then on the backside, it gives lots of good tips for people on safe riding, how to load your bike onto the bus, and some other tools. So we've distributed about 1,000 of these over the last year through the Adventure Center, through local businesses, through the libraries, and through the schools. There's more available through the Adventure Center if anyone doesn't grab one today. And then we've also done a print for some more for next year because we found that they're really valuable tools, particularly for the tourism sector. It helps a lot of the visitors discover town and figure out how to get around on their bike.
Right. Oh, and do you want to hand?
Yeah, I'll pass some around.
We're going to pass the bike maps out. And if there's questions as we go through, maybe if you have a chance to look at it as we go through the tour, then feel free at any point to ask questions about the bike map. Thanks, Ian. All right, so moving on to why we stopped here today. Oh, maybe I should just wait a second. Okay, so moving on to why I decided to have the first stop here today. I wanted to have a look at Waterfront Landing, which is a community that was designed with active transportation in mind, and it's a real contrast to some of our older communities that weren't designed that way. So this is Laurel Wood Road. It has a 25-meter road right-of-way, so a nice healthy road right-of-way. And we have a 3.5-meter bidirectional path on it, which is a fantastic facility. Ultimately, this facility is going to connect across the future Pemberton Bridge and into downtown in that direction. And it currently also connects up into Valley Cliff across the Clark 99 intersection. So it provides a really great connection, and in future it will be a connection to downtown for Valley Cliff residents. I also, we haven't studied this yet, but I have a little hope that we might be able to extend it down towards Totem Hall and provide another connection through in that direction. So that will be a future area of study. And then in the rest of the development, the public roads are mostly 18 meters, which is a bit of a smaller right-of-way, which posed us some interesting challenges as we were working with the developer to try to figure out how to fit in active transportation there. But we came up with what I feel is a fairly good solution, where we have a three-meter bidirectional path on one side for cyclists and pedestrians, but primarily cyclists. And then on the other side, we have a sidewalk. The one thing we did run into is that car doors, so the passenger-side car doors are opening onto the path. And so for the rest of the development, for this type of road, we're hoping to swap where the light posts are to just make a little bit of extra space for those car doors. Now luckily, it's the passenger-side car doors and not the driver-side car doors, so they're less likely to be a problem. And I've ridden around here a bunch and it hasn't been an issue so far. Also, throughout this development, there's a lot of really great pedestrian paths. So as we ride through, keep your eyes open for some of those pedestrian paths. Overall, I think most of us agree that this has turned out quite well for active transportation. So the next stop we're going to do is we're going to go down through the development, and we're going to stop at the closest point that we can get to where the new pedestrian bridge is going to cross. So that's it for this stop, and we can go to the next one.
Any questions, council? I do have one. I wonder, Dora Gunn, if you may briefly speak to bus stop provisions here at the site. I think we may be adjacent to one of them, but if you could speak to bus connections through the site of Waterfront Landing?
Absolutely. So there is the plan in the future to have a transit connection through here. And they actually have gone ahead and built a bus stop, which is a bit early for a bus stop. But the idea is to likely run the bus across the future Pemberton Bridge and through here that way. As to whether we provide bus service here before that point is something that hasn't been decided yet. But so the long-term goal is to have it running through here across the Pemberton Bridge. So we're just waiting and seeing with transit until there's a kind of a critical mass of people and a good route that we can develop through here. So it's to be determined.
Thank you. Any further questions, council, at this point? Then I suggest we recess the meeting until our next stop, which you have described as it is at end of Channel Road, and we'll take it up again within a few minutes. Thank you. We'll call this meeting back to order. We're at the end of Channel Road on Waterfront Landing, and I'll turn it over to our transportation planner again, Dora Gunn, to explain what we've got for discussion points at this stop.
Thank you. Okay, so I wanted to stop here because here we can look at where the connection is going to come down. There's a bidirectional path there, and it's going to come down and cross on the future bike and pedestrian bridge, which will cross from here straight over and land on Victoria Avenue Downtown. The latest timelines I've heard is that construction will start in 2022 and potentially be completed in 2023. So it's not far out that we might have a pedestrian and bike bridge across to downtown, which is really exciting. It'll provide a great connection all the way up into Valley Cliff again, so like another connection to downtown for Valley Cliff. We are currently working on hiring a consultant to have a good look at the multi-use path intersections, which is something that we actually haven't had many of in Squamish yet. We have, you know, bike crossings with roads, but not two multi-use path crossings. And so there's no tack, there's no guidance on how exactly those should be designed. So we're making sure that those are going to be safe for people, particularly because the bridge does have a bit of an up and down, so people may have a bit of speed coming into those intersections. I should also note that Victoria Avenue Downtown is not one of our widest downtown road right-of-ways. And so we're currently looking at how we can accommodate the pedestrian and bike traffic that's going to be coming into downtown onto Victoria Avenue. And that is it for this stop. So the next stop, we get our exercise now. The next stop is going to be up just past the intersection across the highway at Clark 99.
Questions, discussion, council? I have one, Ms. Gunn. We recently passed some new guidelines or design guidelines for downtown. Will these assist in the planning of Victoria and Cleveland in particular in looking ahead to accommodating a multipurpose, multi-use intersection?
Yes, so we have been working with the planning department, which is where I presume those guidelines came from, on making sure that all our engineering designs match up with the planning designs. So absolutely, yes.
Thank you. If there's no further questions, Mayor Elliott?
Maybe you don't know this, but maybe someone here does, is when will we see the final design for the pedestrian and cycling bridge? Because we saw an early design, which had lots of comments and went back, and we haven't seen anything since. Through the chair, I do not know the answer to that question. I'm not sure if anybody does. I have Gary. There you go.
Gary Buxton, a general manager. Yes, those designs, the detailed designs just came in last week, so we're just starting to look at the detail, the detailed construction drawings. So probably within the next couple of months.
If there's no further questions, we'll recess the meeting until our next stop. And I understand, Ms. Gunn, that's going to be at the corner of Clark Drive and Guilford Drive intersection up at the top of the hill. So recess until we can reconvene there. Thank you. So we are reconvened at the corner of Guilford and Clark for our council bicycle tour, and I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Engineering, Chris Wickham, for some comments here.
This is a great example. I think everybody's familiar with all the work that's gone on in this area, but this is a great example of trying to combine active transportation with a lot of driving infrastructure upgrades at the same time and really getting more bang for our buck for the active transportation. So in this area, this whole intersection's been completely reconfigured here and also down at the lights of the intersection, the highway. So at this point, we came up and the active transportation trail used to kind of sneak across here, not at an intersection. This intersection was kind of pre-flowing the wrong way, so we had most traffic stopping and trying to make moves, the active transportation trying to get through at the same time. And we also didn't have a good link up to what's now Waterfront Development or what is now called Sea and Sky. We've been calling it Waterfront Development because that's what it used to be called. Now they're marketing it Sea and Sky for people watching. And also, we were missing a link over to Totem Hall. That part of the trail just wasn't there. So in a very tricky set of design, this is one of those areas that was very difficult. And there's some areas that we're still scratching our heads and working on, including the intersection coming down from the school and during the school rush time. It's not the best for cars at the moment, and so that's still something that we're working on improving. But you can see we have a much improved flow for active transportation, and it's been emphasized in this area as a key crossroads between a number of large communities and hooking up to the corridor trail, which is where we'll be heading. I think next we'll head down to Rose Park and talk more about the corridor trail.
Any questions for Mr. Wickham, council, Mayor Elliott?
So do we have trail counters on any of our active transportation routes so that we can track if it's growing, like people are using them more?
Through the chair, so we have recently purchased trail counters. So we have two units. One is a permanent unit that's going to go on the corridor trail, and the other is a movable unit that we can move around to primarily assess before and after projects that we build. We haven't got those installed yet, but they will be going in shortly.
Other questions here, council?
Are we going to talk about the pinch points at the bottom of this hill when we stop next, or should we talk about it here?
We should talk about it now, I think. So the pinch point, I was actually going to mention that as we talked about the next stop. Pinch point is very high on our list. Our capital projects manager has been trying to work with MOTI to secure funding from them to match with ours because it's kind of a shared problem, and so far that just hasn't managed to line up. So I've been talking to him about possibly just forgetting about the MOTI funding portion and just going ahead ourselves. We do have a solution in mind, which will create a wider path. It won't be the perfect width, but it's going to be a lot better as far as sightlines than it currently is. So it's very high on the priority list, I would say, in the coming couple of years.
All right, so it's another point of advocacy with MOTI, but we're not talking about taking out the rock. We're talking about... Oh, we are?
Yeah, so, sorry, through the chair, we have come to an agreement with MOTI that we've bumped out the barrier a little bit, shared the problem. They're not super happy we lost a shoulder. We'd like it to be more, but that allows us to get the trail machine through at least, and we will be moving off basically to the property line as far as we can get to open it up further.
Councillor Hereford?
So has it been bumped out from years to pass currently?
Yes.
And the trail machine can get through there?
That's what we understand.
I witnessed a particularly bad situation there in the winter when the snow had accumulated in that channel, and I watched someone struggle through as I was cruising past. So the trail machine will be able to get in there and look after that this winter?
That's what we understand, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions? I'll have a couple of comments. As a frequent user of this intersection, I think it is a success story. I might to ask the videographer just to briefly film the rest of the intersection there. I'll be referring to the pressure-reducing valve station in the trees, which formerly were a visibility issue, a safety issue, in particular for Valley Cliff drivers southbound on coming up the hill on Guilford Drive. I would suggest that they are still a minor issue for drivers with bad habits not coming to a full stop here. However, I've not observed that. As we can see, drivers from Hospital Hill and the hospital are coming to full stop. However, I believe that for the pedestrians and cyclists using this intersection, we do have some safety issues, and they come up quite frequently. And we can again refer to bad habits, of course, but we might do two things. Consider better lighting here for nighttime conditions, and also some signage, just as an extra effort to encourage better practices on the part of pedestrians and cyclists so that they stop, because it's not always easy to see for drivers coming from the hospital and the hospital and Hospital Hill. And just that extra element of safety here, I think, would be well advised. The drivers do have a lot of things to look at, in particular to the left, whereas we have pedestrians and cyclists coming from the right. And so you need to do a full turn as a driver to expose yourself to everything going on. So a couple of extra safety ideas here might be worthwhile considering. May I also suggest, in case we don't address this in the next stop, that there are some drainage issues, and councillor Hereford has referred to one in wintertime at the bottom of the hill by the pressure point, but also further along on that trail on the bridge itself are some drainage issues, and the water does freeze over during the winter. So there are some water drainage issues on the bridge and elsewhere on the corridor trail that might be looked at as being relatively inexpensive to address. If there's no further questions, then we'll recess for now until stop number four. Thank you. So we are reconvened on the corridor trail in Rose Park near the Squamish Hostel, and I'm going to turn it over to our Director of Engineering again, Chris Wickham.
Hello. So we're mostly here to talk about lighting. Corridor Trail is major north-south trunk, it's paved the whole way, and put a lot of energy and budget into this trail over the past years. And we're getting the point, the vision is a fully lit, all-year-round trail, and we're very close. We're just completing the lighting portion from the Adventure Center to Finch Drive, and then that next section's already lit. And we're also working on from the Mamcom Bridge up to Mamcom Road. At that point, we'll be fully lit for almost the entire length of the trail, with just a few places in the sort of the north and south ends that are a little bit dim that we want to go in in the future and tune up. While we're doing that, we're also putting in fiber conduit for the IT group to link up all of our district facilities and save on telecommunications costs. We call that the dark fiber network, which is a very exciting and mysterious name. So we're putting in conduit for all of that so it can get pulled through once it gets linked up. While we're here, this area is going to become even more important as an active transportation hub in coming years. The Red Bridge development across the way, we'll be putting a pedestrian bridge, I think, after phase two. So it's a little bit driven by developers' timelines, but there'll be another pedestrian bridge coming in here, and also they'll be improving the link-up up to Hospital Hill and down to the corridor trail. So that development will bring some much-needed facilities for the focus up on Hospital Hill.
Questions, council? Councillor Hereford?
Thank you. I'm happy to see the lighting sort of ever progressing. And I'm curious about the section we just came down from, say, Hospital Hill to here. I noticed I was coasting quite fast down that hill, and is there lighting there? And what's that look like?
Through the chair, so that section is moderately well-lit. So there is lighting. You absolutely can go there at night. It's got a few darkish spots, but it's not too bad. So our goal was to get the whole trail to a point where you could more or less ride it, and then after that, we can go back and try and fix up a few of those spots that aren't quite perfect.
Just the speed of that section makes me think that we want to have it as well-lit as we can figure out to. Thank you for the support.
Other comments or questions, council? Councillor Race?
Yeah, just Mr. Wickham, have we decided or has it ever been decided exactly where that bridge is going as part of the Red Bridge development?
Do you know the answer, Gary? In terms of how far along the design is as far as the point where it's going to land over here?
We haven't seen any preliminary designs on this bridge.
Very good. I just thought I'd offer a couple of comments as a Hospital Hill resident. Councillor Race has mentioned that there are different opinions and proposals over time regarding the connections across here for cyclists and pedestrians. Two comments. One is on the alignment. This alignment does not offer distance advantages to Scott Crescent, and this is what's something that area residents have been pointing out for quite some time. The other thing is that I can't help but emphasize is the real problem is on the coming down the bank or going up the bank for pedestrians. And improvements to both of the existing connections, whether a staircase on the steep section or better surfacing on the switchback route that's available, can't happen soon enough, and I'll leave it at that. Further questions, council? Then we'll recess the meeting here and reconvene on Pemberton Avenue between Hunter, let's see, between the railroad tracks and east of Loggers Lane. Thank you. So we are reconvened on Pemberton Avenue near the CN rail crossing east of Loggers Lane, and I'll turn it over to our transportation planner, Dora Gunn.
Thank you. So we're stopped here to primarily talk about Pemberton Avenue. There's some new bike lanes on what I call the west side of Pemberton Avenue that we're going to ride later on in the tour, but we also were looking to create a solution for Pemberton East. So that's a section between Loggers and the underpass. There's a lot of changes that are going to come to Pemberton in the future with the Pemberton Bridge, so we didn't want to spend a whole ton of money building something too fancy on the side. There's also development coming probably, so there might be opportunities there too. So we're looking for more of an interim solution. And so in the next couple of weeks, we are going to have a new neighborhood way installed here. So that would mean a 30-kilometer zone, and the center line will be mostly eradicated except not by the rail crossing. We're eradicating the central lines. That's a recommendation in the BC Active Transportation Design Guide for the neighborhood ways. And then it'll be a shared zone with bikes and cars sharing the roadway. So that's going to be coming really soon, and I think it's going to be improving the connection all the way from the underpass and then into the Pemberton bike lanes. And then also, while we're here, we have talked before about the Hunter Place Trail, but I just thought I'd mention it again. This has provided a really important connection for folks coming under the underpass and wanting to get over to the Nesters Can area or to the schools. It's used a lot. We are hoping to still upgrade this path to a wider paved facility that will probably be linked with development. And then we do have one little missing section, which is the section from Hunter Place over to Cleveland. So we are looking at opportunities to improve that section as well in the coming years. That's it.
Questions, comments, council? Mayor Elliott?
So, Dora, we get questions from people about the speed on our roads, and people ask all the time, why can't you just drop the speeds to 40? And I know we had a pilot project in our budget this year, which we didn't get provincial okay for. So could you just elaborate on why we have to create neighborhood ways versus just dropping the speed limit in all of our residential areas?
Through the chair? Yes, absolutely. So I actually will be coming back to council to talk about that project again. The MOTI didn't provide the opportunity to do a pilot project like we had anticipated, which would have allowed us to drop the speed limits across town. The challenge that we face is that in order to change speed limits according to the current provincial legislation, we have to place signs on every road, every section of every road. So it becomes very expensive and also very sign-intensive to do. And so we can't just place a sign at the beginning of our community saying, hey, everywhere is now 40 or 30. It requires a lot of signage. So we can't easily proceed without the MOTI pilot unless we want to put signs everywhere.
Other questions, council? I do have one myself. Ms. Gunn, I'm going to, the question is, what kind of public engagement process can we, might we envision for planning for improvements on Pemberton Avenue? And I'll give you a little bit of background as to why I asked that, because it is being asked by the current property owners here towards the north. Pemberton Avenue has a lot of constraints, and it is still being used and will be used long-term for tractor-trailer truck units. And there are ongoing safety issues for pedestrians and cyclists regarding the shared right-of-way here. Now, the right-of-way itself, in fact, and I'll have our videographer film that way in a minute, but the middle of the right-of-way is in fact this white line, not the yellow one. These poles are inside the right-of-way, and in fact, this fence here at Squamish Mills compound is within the right-of-way. And so we need to perhaps look at safety issues in how the right-of-way is used today. The other matter is the future safety of this railway crossing, and the local truck shop operators are suggesting that perhaps this railway crossing might be closed and an alternative route through to Hunter Place or from Hunter Place to Pemberton be installed. And we have on the other side a decommissioned road right on the other side of the tracks that belongs to the railway. It was leased out as a road previously by the railway. But we have a lot of safety issues that I do know that local property owners and road users would be keen to take part in an engagement process.
Sure. So these larger types of changes that you're talking about are the kinds of things that we would be looking at as we go into the design process for the Pemberton Bridge. So right now, we don't want to spend a lot of money on changes on Pemberton Avenue, given that the traffic volumes right now are quite low. So it's not a huge area of focus compared to, for example, Government Road where the traffic volumes are quite high. However, we will be looking at it absolutely as we go into the Pemberton Bridge design process. I can't speak to it any more than that, but I will open it up if anybody else wants to create, make a comment on that.
I would only add that we have been in preliminary discussions with sort of key stakeholders, including business owners down the road here, and have completed an engineering study of sort of very preliminary to make sure that everything sort of fits in in the future, just far enough to make sure that we don't have a problem. As you say, the rights-of-way here are a little bit wonky. And so we have completed a study and are in discussions with the business owners here.
May I ask if our municipal engineer might comment on how the issues here might be addressed, at least peripherally, in the context of the downtown entrance study that's upcoming or underway?
Yeah, the, I mean, this is sort of outside of the scope of the downtown entrance. Obviously, it's been considered as one of the things that feeds into the downtown entrance, like the intersection, obviously, at Loggers and Pemberton is very much part of that study. This is going to get addressed more as we work with the developments that are coming into this area. So that's, I think, where we're going to refocus again. Like the neighborhood way is the for-now solution, the temporary solution, and then there will be more discussion. Because keeping in mind as well, this is also the downtown dyke here, or future downtown dyke. So there's like a lot of different, a lot of different issues we're trying to consider in a very small space and with very constrained right-of-way and also these small parcels of private land. So it's like, this is a complicated zone that we're going to be continuing to look at over the next few years.
Thank you. Council, any further questions or comments here? I'll just offer one more brief one. At our last stop up at the top of Guilford and Clark, we talked about the pedestrians and cyclists' safety, and sometimes pedestrians and cyclists don't have the best habits. And here, or rather, take into account the visibility issues for drivers. And here's another example, and we'll have our videographer turn around to the telephone pole in a minute here. But as cyclists are coming this direction up to meet Pemberton Avenue, they're not sometimes paying attention to cars that can't see them because of the telephone pole obstruction. And this may be another place to consider a friendly signage to pedestrians and cyclists using this crossing that the drivers can't see them as they jump out onto Pemberton Avenue heading up towards Valley Cliff through the underpass. Anyone else, council? Councillor Peddingill?
Yeah, I just wanted to offer a bit of a counterpoint, and I appreciate the consideration of safety, but I think it's maybe worth considering, you know, maybe signage for drivers, you know, the expectation that cyclists and pedestrians are deferring to cars or the other way around. And I think as we move towards more active transportation and that shift, it may be important in thinking about safety and how we direct the safety instructions on it. Obviously, you have to be careful about cars, but just how we think about it is maybe important.
Good point, Councillor Peddingill. Any other comments or questions? Then we'll recess until our next stop, which I believe is number five?
Six, actually.
Number six. Oh, we're coming along. And we'll join there. Thank you. So we are reconvened at A. Call Squamish Elementary at the Jumar Development on Buckley Avenue, and here I'll turn it over to our municipal engineer, Laura.
Hey, so we're here at, this used to be, this site used to have just a gravel shoulder, no cyclist. Hey, so we're here at, this used to be, this, this site used to have just a gravel shoulder, no cycling or pedestrian infrastructure at all. Um, so over the last few years, as they built this development, we've now have a multi-use path. Well, actually, it's, it's really a bidirectional bike lane, as well as beside a sidewalk. Um, we, we're gonna put a, this isn't all quite finished yet. Okay, so the, the last thing I'll talk about here is just sidewalks. So this is a, it's a slight speed table style of crosswalk that we've created here. Um, we had to work out some complicated drainage issues. It wasn't a simple design. But we ultimately ended up with a, uh, with a, with a, the grade change so that slows cars down as they go over it. And it will have green paint to go with it as well, uh, hopefully tomorrow, actually, that should be, that should be done. So, yeah, this has been a long time in coming. We've also made a few traffic changes on Cleveland Avenue as well that you'll notice when you drive.
All right, back to the chair, or is it back to?
Laura Gunn, did you have further comments?
Thank you. Uh, so I just wanted to add as well that this path connects into the path that travels past Acol Squamish Elementary and then past, uh, House of Secondary, and then eventually will continue o- on along the Discovery Trail route. So eventually, this will form a part of a much longer trail that will extend throughout the community to more. Um, I also wanted to take a quick sec to talk about transit shelters. We're about to bike past a new construction of, uh, a pad, which is going to be a transit shelter for one of our very busy stops, uh, transit stops, uh, in front of the school there. Um, we applied to the Beast of Transit Shelter program for a shelter for that stop, and they are saying that we should likely receive that next year, so in 2022. Um, at the same time, we also applied for a shelter for the stop that's on Diamond Head Road near Mamcom Road. Um, we should also receive that next year. Um, and this year, we are receiving a shelter for a small bus stop, which is up in the Highlands on Pitla Freeway, as well as two benches that are going in at the two, um, bus stops that are in front of Pollock House. Um, so we are slowly plugging ahead with, uh, upgrading our, our transit stops, the transit shelters. Um, and then a few, we're trying to, we have a list of, uh, the, the hi- the stops with the highest number of boardings, and we're trying to obviously put shelters at those highest boarding stops. There's some, we've, we've done all the easy ones, so now we're into some of the harder ones where we have, uh, largely land issues that we're trying to sort out. So we're still working away on those if they are coming.
Questions, Council? Comments, questions? Then as, just we'll reconvene at Third Avenue and Buckley. So we are reconvened at Third Avenue and Bailey Street, and here I'll turn it over again to our Transportation Planner, Dora Gunn.
Thank you. Uh, so we have discussed Third Avenue in the past on a Council Bike Tour, but I wanted to provide an update. Uh, so Third Avenue is our planned, uh, one of our planned north-south downtown bike routes. It's also a transit route. Um, it's a really important connection, and it's a really high priority for us. And we actually have budget this year to look at the, uh, concept design for this street. Um, it's an interesting challenge because we have the current, um, road width and including some of the infrastructure that we have, like, uh, light standards and, and hydro poles. And then we have the future option, which involves a 2.5-meter setback. So any new construction has a, has a, has a more of a setback, which allows for some sidewalk to be on their land. So that provides more options in the future. So as we do a concept design, we have to consider both what we can do now, given the space we have, and how to tie that into what we may be able to do in the future if development happens. So that's what we're working on right now. Um, and it's definitely a big challenge, and you end, can potentially end up with a situation where you have, um, you know, some of the facilities jogging in and out over time, which is, which is a, which is a challenge. Um, so I would say that we're doing the concept design starting this year, and my hope is that in the coming couple of years, again, we'll be able to start working on actually building out, um, some better infrastructure on Third and, and creating that connection downtown, which is so important. So the next stop, actually, just pass it back to you.
Any questions or comments at this point, Council? Go ahead, Ms. Gunn.
Thank you. Um, so the next stop, we're going to talk about, um, the new bike lanes on Pemberton Avenue. And I thought, uh, just because it's a beautiful day and we have time, that we might as well ride the whole length of them. So we're going to ride, we're gonna go down Third to, uh, Pemberton, and we'll ride along Pemberton to Loggers, and then we'll stop, we'll see where the best space is to stop at, at, uh, at Pemberton and Loggers.
Very good. We'll recess for now and reconvene at approximately Pemberton and Loggers Lane. So we are reconvened at Pemberton Avenue and Loggers Lane, and I'll turn it over to Dora Gunn.
Wait one second. All right, thank you. Uh, so we are here to talk about the new bike lanes on Pemberton. This project, uh, was a long time coming. We started working on it in 2019, um, and it was a lot more complex than we originally anticipated. We went through a, a whole number of design iterations. Um, we considered protected bike lanes, so either up the curb or with some sort of barrier. We considered, um, bidirectional, so all on one side, versus unidirectional, which is what we ended up with. Um, we almost went ahead with a bidirectional on the north side, and then we realized that it actually caused some safety issues at the intersections. So we ended up going back away from that and moving towards this design. Um, the painted, uh, design, as opposed to a protected, is a little bit less expensive, which was good because we still aren't quite sure what's gonna happen once the Pemberton Bridge comes in, so we didn't want to spend too much money on this project, knowing that it could easily change in the future. Um, we also have challenges at the intersection, so, uh, we spent quite a lot of time working on the, the, um, signal at Cleveland. And we actually ended up adding push buttons for the bikes, as well as changing the timing for the vehicles slightly. So, um, drivers may find that it's slightly improved for vehicles' flow as well. And then we also looked at this intersection here at Loggers. Um, it's a challenge because it's a track route. It doesn't quite meet the warrants for a four-way stop, so we didn't wanna put the four-way stop in. Um, but we are going to be installing the flashing lights here. Those should be coming in the next couple of weeks. So very soon, um, they'll be able to be activated by bikes going in either direction, and we'll have the, the flashing lights here, uh, which is an improvement. Um, a note from the Capital Projects Manager on this, he said he found this project really hard to avoid scope creep. So as we were designing into this area, there's so many opportunities where you could improve things like the sidewalk here, or, you know, the sidewalk at some of these other, uh, intersections, and so we had a hard time cutting it off at a certain point, because you could just go bigger and bigger and bigger. Yeah. So, yeah, that's, that's it for this stop.
Questions, Council? Councilor Hurford?
Thank you. I'm happy to hear about the, uh, the flashing lights here for pedestrian crossing. Um, earlier in our, in our, uh, journey today, we were talking about lighting. How about lighting this intersection? I don't see a direct streetlight for this intersection. We're putting lots of humans there. Is that, is there, uh, something in the works for that?
Through the chair. Uh, so I'll have to ask my Capital Projects Manager about that. Uh, we did discuss lighting, and I'm not sure where that landed, so, um, it's to be determined.
Other questions, Council? I do have one, uh, Ms. Gunn. Uh, this corner here has more in the past, I haven't noticed it so much lately, been used by, for parking, uh, perpendicular to Loggers Lane, which obstructs the view of vehicles coming, uh, eastbound on Pemberton, turning south. And I wonder, I see that the business here has a no-parking sign. Are we having conversations with the business owners to make sure that the vehicles are parked here as safely as possible for the purposes of visibility for drivers at the intersection?
Yes, so we have looked at this one. It actually wasn't me that did that work. Um, it was Josie Anne. Do you, Laura, do you know? No. Uh, so we did look at it, and she did discuss it with the business owner, and I believe the solution they came to was these white markings here and then perhaps there's no parking signs. Um, and I understand that situation is better than it was. Yes.
Perhaps the parking sign might be a little bit more official than the one I see to hide.
I can't see it from here.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions, Council? Then we will recess and reconvene, I understand, at Second Avenue. Yes, very good. So we are reconvened on Second Avenue between Victoria Street and Winnipeg Street, and I'll turn it over to our staff, I understand, Ms. Prinzek.
Okay, so we are here at one of our new developments on Second Avenue. And the big change that's caused a little bit of confusion is that the, we've changed the curb alignment on Second Avenue from where it traditionally was. Push it in about, I didn't, in a meter and a half. Um, so it's, the parking's gotten a little odd, but there still is street parking. Um, eventually, as properties redevelop or as we have funding to, to make it happen, we will be changing the curb line on both sides of the street. So there's a few, um, the reason behind this is, Second Avenue only has a 20-meter road right-of-way, so it's one of the, one of the, just the more modest road right-of-ways that's typical of downtown. We needed to create more space for pedestrian rail. We wanted to have space for streetlights, street trees, um, to make a, you know, a nicer, more pleasant downtown. We have a lot of new residents moving into downtown. Um, and then as well, what these bumpouts do is they will eventually, like, this will be a future, um, mid-block crossing. Our blocks are very long in Squamish, so it's helpful to be able to offer pedestrians a choice of getting across their street safely. Um, as well, it narrows the road right-of-way and has a visual impact on drivers that causes them to slow down. So we will be seeing the next, um, on the corner of Victoria and Second. There are two, two new developments going in on either side of Victoria Avenue over the next couple of years, and they will also be bringing the curbs out and creating bulges at the curbs. So this is, uh, exciting for Second Avenue. It's gonna be, in a few years, a lot nicer place to walk, and, uh, yeah, that's, that's the vision for Second.
Thank you. Any questions or council, or, uh, comments, Council?
There be any provisions for biking, or is it a share the road on Second?
Yeah, we looked at that, um, carefully, thank you for that. Um, and it's, um, so what we decided was that because of the road width, we only had so many options for, for cyclists, if we wanted to keep street parking, and street parking was a definite priority by, um, that the public weighed in on. So we are gonna have protected bike lanes ultimately on Third Avenue. We still have sharrows on Cleveland Avenue. So Second Avenue is share the road if you, if you wish, but we're not gonna encourage that. It's more of a get yourself to Second Avenue, hop off your bike, walk a half block to whatever business or to your residence. Um, and, yeah, so it's sort of a, this, this is our pedestrian-oriented street.
Other questions, comments? Ms. Gunn, do I understand this is our last stop of the tour? Then I'd like to take the opportunity to thank you very much for this great itinerary. We learned a lot today. Good discussion, and thanks to the staff assisting, uh, Ms. Prinzek, Mr. Wickham, and the rest of our resource people that are along today. I'll entertain a motion to terminate this committee, the whole meeting. Councilor Hurford moves. You have a second here, Mayor Elliott? None opposed? Carried. Thanks very much, everyone.